Clock.
I like to call this public hearing on the proposed local law number three of two thousand and twenty ag events law. On December eighth, two thousand and twenty to be open. Audience participation is allowed. So we'll have to do attendant. Everything's by roll call, so just so the audience knows it. So to establish the quorum, Oberly here, Councilwoman Cunningham.
Yeah.
Councilman Giuliano.
Here.
Councilman Dean Michael.
Here.
Councilman Whitten.
Here.
Town Clerk Mackin.
Here.
Everyone's present, so we have a quorum. We can officially hold a meeting. Town Clerk will read the public hearing notice.
Please take notice that the town of Clinton will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December eighth, two thousand and twenty via Zoom video conference. Bistent with executive orders two oh two point one and two oh two point one five as extended. Addressing the COVID nineteen virus at six o'clock P M prevailing time. Or as soon thereafter, as the matter is reached on the agenda concerning proposed local law number three of two thousand and twenty titled agricultural events law. Pursuant to Article sixteen of New York Town Law. Please take further notice due to public health concerns. In-person attendance will not be permitted. However. The public will be fully able to observe and participate in the public hearing via computer, smartphone, tablet, or other electronic device. The public is invited to attend the public hearing held via Zoom video conference and comment on the proposed local law. Members of the public who wish to comment may do so by joining via Zoom. The pass codes will be published on the town of Clinton website, townofclinton.com. Which will enable the public to participate in the meeting. The codes can also be retrieved by emailing Town Clerk Carrie Mackin at townclerk@townofclinton.com. Comments for the public hearing can also be submitted in advance of the public hearing by sending an email to townclerk@townofclinton.com. The local law will take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. Complete copies of the proposed local law are available at townofclinton.com and at the Town of Clinton Clerk's office. For inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on said proposal at the date, time, and place aforesaid.
Okay.
What? Let everybody in?
What?
I let the public in?
Yeah, you can let the public in.
Okay.
All in? Okay, at this time, I open the floor for public comments. And turn the meeting over to Councilman Michael, who will ask for comments from the public and Town Clerk will record whatever facts are presented. So at this time, Dean, take over.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Jeff, are you on? I don't see Jeff's on, but.
Yeah, Jeff is there.
Is he?
Yeah.
Jeff, I don't know if you wanted to read your your comment that you emailed me?
Jeff's muted.
Thanks. I'm used to this Zoom thing. Thanks, Dean. Hi, let me pull it up.
So while you're doing that, just so everybody knows, Shane had only just sent out. Even though everything was updated back in February. With the comments from the last meeting Shane made updates. And we had kind of a verbal from Dutch County Planning, but we never got. We never sent them officially the document because that was around the time that everything got shut down. So Shane had only just sent it to to them, so they they do have thirty days, so we can't take a vote on it tonight. Because we need to wait for Dutch County planning for thirty days, so. So and we haven't gotten a comment back, so but Jeff, if you're.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you, Dean. Do you have to include the part about the the conference center?
Whatever you think is appropriate. So just so everybody knows. There's this is kind of like a two-phase process because currently we already have current law on the books for a conference center. Which the Dutchess is the only one that has that that permit. So someone could actually go in and get a a conference center permit. What this does is it separates ag events and conference centers. And because we are separating them, we do need to modify that language in that conference center law, so. We do. We did plan on what we have the changes, so we can talk about it tonight, but it'll be a public hearing for next month.
Okay, great. Yeah, thanks. That was what I it sort of hit me this morning when I was reading the the latest version. Like I said to Dean, I think this is the best version yet, so congratulations for for all the work to get to this point. But that was something that I noticed was that since everything falls under the new two fifty dash forty five point one. It only applies specifically to agricultural event venues. So someone could conceivably apply as a conference center and circumvent the more strict rules that are being put in place. And under the agricultural events venue, but. Given what Dean just explained, then for the conference center to also be reviewed. And I would imagine some of these then would be applied to that, and I look forward to to hearing that. So I'm glad that that's in the works. And then the other specific comment, and I do have some things, just most housekeeping stuff. But the other specific comment was again related to the amplified sound. Currently, it says all sources of amplified sound, including but not limited to music performances and spoken words, shall be contained entirely within an enclosed structure. And. One of the things that. That sticks with me through this whole process is we got here because of the desire to create, to to give better enforcement tools to the town. And so in an instance like this where it's a technicality, I understand, but. A cellphone ringing, for example, or a cellphone being used to play playing music is amplified sound. So it makes it almost unenforceable by commonality. And if what we're trying to do is to create better tools for enforcement. Then it seems to me to make more sense to word it something like this. All sources of amplified sound intended as part of the event. Including but not limited to music, performance, and spoken words shall be contained entirely within the event area. And then eliminate the sentence that that follows that regarding buildings and structures. And what that does is it means that any source of amplification has to be contained within the event area. And later in the same paragraph, it refers to the the town noise ordinance. So everything is covered in there. I just think that cleans it up and makes it more easily enforced.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
And I know Rebecca, you had just sent over an email and I hadn't gotten a chance to to read the whole thing, even though it's not that long, but I did briefly skim through it. So if you want to make your comment.
Thank you, Councilman Michael. My comments are brief. I will second the comments that this law has come a long way. I really appreciate the town board's efforts and responsiveness to our previous comments. My additional comments are really limited to the section of the law that addresses the renewal and review of the special use permit. We very much appreciate that it's no longer subject to an annual application. It is, though, still subject to an annual submission by the zoning administrator. And then the language states that the planning board shall have the discretion to amend or revoke the special use permit. Based upon the findings of its annual review and may, in its discretion, hold a public hearing prior to taking any action. It is the discretionary portion that I I'm commenting on is case law supports that a municipal board's decision to revoke. Cannot be arbitrary capricious or capricious, must be supported by substantial evidence. And you have to abide by certain procedural formalities, one of those being notice to the interested parties. And a public hearing as supported by case law out of Westchester County. In addition, we just note that revocation is not appropriate when it would be unduly harsh in relation to the alleged violation and shocking to one's sense of fairness. So we respectfully submit that the language quoted in my letter should be revised to provide that a public hearing on notice to all interested parties. Only if the planning board finds that the zoning administrators' report raises grounds for potential amendment or revocation. If the zoning administrators' report does not raise any alleged violations, the review should be complete at that time. However, if the planning board does intend to amend or potentially revoke the permit, the holder is entitled to notice and an opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I it all sounds fair. I mean, in a sense that the only reason for the review process was to. To hear comments from the neighbors or any other interested party for any violations, whether it be excessive noise or continued issues. And and so it allows for an opportunity for town residents to have that. That ability to either fix remedy or get rid of the event, you know, center itself.
Yes, and and I understand that comments aren't necessarily haven't come from this board, but during the course of these public hearings that I've attended. There has been some interest in if there's a violation, pull a permit and, you know, revoke it. And we just want to make clear that the holder of the permit does have the opportunity to contest any allegations made of violations.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else have comments or?
A few housekeeping things in terms of. A couple of words here or there. At this time or sometime later.
You can come to me now since no one else has commented.
So I'll just go page by page. I I like the definitions and appreciate the use of capitalization, which I know we've discussed in the past. It mentions farm and when farm is capitalized, since we're referring predominantly to Ag and Markets law. I would recommend wherever capital farm appears, that is followed by the word capital operation, capital O operation. To better be in line with the usage that Ag and Markets uses. I'm going to make that definition more clear. On page one, event area. Just a typo, the location designated on an approved site plan. Sorry, let me make sure I add this up.
You said that was under.
Yeah, so under the the definition of event area. Since the definitions aren't part of forty five point one and would apply wholly throughout the town code. I would recommend making the change. The to the location designated on an approved site plan and removing of an agricultural event venue. So it applies to all site plans. Since that's again, the definitions would be in section one or five. Page two, at the very bottom, C sub three capitalized farm operations. Oh, sorry, above that, C sub one. There's an S after event. So again, just for consistency, agricultural event venue. Next page, three subsection four. It says lots or lots, but it should be lot. So there's an extra S in the first one. In subsection five. There's still in the town, a specific form to be used, the authorization of use form. So, right. That's the case, and I would recommend referencing that in subsection five as opposed to just a written authorization, again, just for consistency. Same page, three, D, D three. There's a comma missing, New York State Uniform Building Code comma as amended comma should be there. Page four at the top. It says form should be from same paragraph, second to last line, same typo, instead of form should be from. Next paragraph, section five. But halfway through, it says produced on the farm operation during the previous year and how the intends on marketing its crops to livestock. So it seems like there's something missing there. Maybe it was farm operation, but there should be something between the and intense. I already went through the bottom of that page, my comment there. Page five, section nine, second line, shall be solely for the use by event attendees. I would recommend dropping the. So it's just for use by event attendees and staff. Bottom of the page, section twelve. Now that I understand about the dude ranch also being addressed, conference centers and dude ranch has been addressed separately. I had the question of do we want to pull out the second, the. Interjection that says and any special use permit issued to an existing dude ranch is previously defined by the town code. And move that over to the new revision of dude ranch, predominantly because it's the only place in this entire section that refers to dude ranch. Page six, similar to what Rebecca had had said. I really am happy to see that it's a review process. In the change there, it just looks like there were some other renewal words that were not changed. So, for example, in fourteen, under fee, an annual fee due at initial approval and then upon each annual renewal. Well, if the special use permit isn't renewed, but it's an annual fee, then maybe it's upon each anniversary of the special use permit. Same thing in the next fifteen noncompliance. Second line, including without limitation, the failure to renew the special use instead of renew, the failure to submit the annual fee for the special use permit on time. Section seventeen. Health permanent approvals, swimming pools and public water supplied should be public water supplies. Or or public water supply, single is probably fine too, but. And again, there's an S on events. And that was it? Thanks for letting me go through that.
All right. Anybody else have comments?
Arlene, you need to unmute.
Arlene, are you saying something?
Hold on, sorry. How's that? Sorry.
Sure.
Just questions. I'm sorry, Dean, I didn't get the chance to send you a comment. So how do we? How do we differentiate this from those people who? Let's say they just want to have a wedding event. So I understand it says you have, they have to use their own products and it's an ag event. I guess anybody, I guess this is different from the ag events than the regular people who just want to. Have a wedding venues or using the farm extension to have. An event, right?
So someone's using, you just read the definition, which is agricultural venue, if you.
Yeah, and you have the, yeah, you have an event, then you have the agricultural event venue. Yeah.
Right. It it specifically says for hire as a location for events. So if you're just having a wedding that's not for hire at your house, that doesn't apply.
Yes, and it's commercial. Okay, on another note. Like going back, we have this huge thing about on field road, right? Because since now it it doesn't restrict with the town road or the county road. Like field road, there is one property over there that the whole neighbors are totally against. Because field road is a one lane road and, you know, it's congested, so they will be, they. With this regulations, they'll be able to qualify, right?
Yeah, we we went round and round about the the road and whether county or connector or any of the languages that we're using before. So this is this is the product after going through all that.
I'm sorry, taking advantage. Also, going back, we were talking about limiting the number of events with this regulations, they could have as many as they want. Going back, we're trying to limit like six a year. With this one, they could have as many as they want.
That was another thing that was in several drafts that changed over the over the course of time, but. You know, it was so ag markets, the county planning, everybody that's put input. Basically said, if this is truly a farm event. You can't limit farms from having events.
And another thing, since they could have wedding or weddings or sweet sixteen, whatever that is. Of course, they're going to have, they're going to be serving alcohol. Is that included with that verbiage about the food and the beverage? So they're okay to serve alcohol, right?
Well, anybody that serves alcohol has to have a license.
Yes, but we're talking about how is it going to impact about traffic, drunk drivers, people driving in and out. Health hazard, safety.
I'm 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 missing the question or I'm missing the.
Well, you're right.
I understand, we talked about all these different things, but you know, whether. You know, the the fact is that. You know, the the wineries, the two wineries that we have. Or whether it be Adrian's, the old Adrian's farm that actually produces. A beer product. Have a a farm producing license. So. You know, we, I I I just don't know how to answer your question. I know what your question is, but it's it's, you know, how do you stop? How do you stop anybody from drinking and driving on the road? I mean, it's.
Yeah, yeah, I guess my, I guess it's more of an impact and safety measures, you know, for the public.
If if I can jump in, in on page five, where it talks about food and beverage service. It says food service and beverage providers shall hold and shall produce upon demand all required permits and licenses. And so for someone to serve alcohol legally in the state, they would have to have, as Dean mentioned, a license from the New York State Liquor Authority, even if it was a temporary one-day license. And in order to obtain that license, one of the things that the applicant must agree to is enforcing all New York State laws around consumption and controlled alcohol. And so that the license holder becomes fully responsible for anybody who is over intoxicated or anybody who drinks and drives from the property. So all that sort of built into New York State laws, which this references, it could be more specific by actually calling out. A a New York State liquor license in paragraph nine there, but I think I think it essentially does cover it that way.
Yeah, and that's really the bottom line, whether it was a bar or restaurant or those businesses are responsible for anybody that leaves their property, so.
And I'm sorry. Another, with regards to the sound, to the music or whatever noise, can we? Can we put on the regulations about how about putting soundproofing the the building, you know, not just, you know, it.
About that and 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 I think Jeff, you even made comments about it in in several of the meetings. It would be impractical to soundproof a whole barn.
And and yeah, that's true. And and while that would be the ideal situation, and I'm actually, I'm actually a big fan of that. I I I think everything should be soundproofed, but I don't think it's practical. I think that that the control there is in the the noise ordinance, which is in a different section, and that the noise ordinance is. Clearly spelled out through the process and the planning board is clear with the applicants that this is going to be enforced and then that there is an enforcement model for the town to actually stay on that. Because I think that really is an issue.
Impractical with regards to to the cost or to the. The construction on the barn?
Largely because of the cost and also a lot of the events and in are held in tents, which is allowed by earlier parts of the law. So a tent wouldn't be able to be soundproofed or if it was fully outdoors.
Well, I think the cost factor is is going to be out of the question. They're going to be making money for this events, I I assume.
Just that you can't soundproof something that it's totally soundproof. And again, we've we've went through this for the last two years. Talking about the different measures and everything else. The bottom line is that we have a noise ordinance, so. Whether it's soundproofed or it's not soundproofed, there's still. Supposed to override everything.
All right, um, what's my last question? Last question. So it's renewable, right? So the procedural process, they have to go to the planning board, so it's like a special permit. It, it's good. Do they have to renew it every year or like special permit expires in? I mean, special permit, once they have it, they have it. Exactly. With this one, do we have to look at it again and renew it?
It's up to, you know, the code enforcement officer to determine whether there was any. Defects, you know, issues that were reported over the year and whether they were remedied over the the course of the year.
And the ten acres, it's. They have anybody who has ten acres and they are in the ag district and a farm can apply and, of course, using their own products, right? Could qualify.
Well.
We talked about twenty five. I know the Dutch is counting kind of like overrule that.
We had fifty acres, we had twenty five acres and, you know, Dutch County planning poo-pooed anything. It it and and, you know, whether it's a farm and, you know, there's limitations as to income that that has to be produced. Versus the revenues that you get from non-farm activities. So there is that limitation that. You know, a small ten-acre farm is not going to produce enough revenues to offset to have this exemption.
And Dean brings up another thing as far as the limits that Arlene, you had mentioned. That there used to be in the law, you know, a certain number of events per year. In terms of agricultural events, they're already limited by New York State Ag and Markets law. That the revenue from a farm operations event operation cannot exceed thirty percent of their total revenue. So that measure, so somebody can't be doing ten weddings at fifteen thousand dollars apiece if they're not producing four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on their farm.
And do we have to spell that out on this regulations that they should comply with the.
Belt and egg markets. I mean, it's it's already in there.
All right, and last, going back, we talked about proposing this law, we're going to eliminate the dude ranch. So we're not, so dude ranch is still going to be a regs?
Well, because we already have one on the books until it changes from not being on the books, we have to still have a law for it.
You're talking about this zoning revision or with this thing, is it, I mean, do we still have that dude ranch?
Is a conference center dude ranch. I mean, it's, you know, so unless they get rid of their designation, we have to have a law that addresses it. If they give up their designation and we want to get rid of that from being in the town, we can certainly remove from the zoning. But, you know, that's why we're changing the language to fix some of the differences between the conference center and and, I mean, the event center and the the conference center.
Like, like the Duchess, the LLC, the Duchess LLC with Jeff. So right now they have a special permit for a dude ranch. So if, do they still have to apply for a permit for this one or?
Don't have to. If they they. Originally Jeff had mentioned that they were going to, but they don't have to.
Because they're going to automatically qualified.
Well, they're grandfathered to having it anyway, so it's.
Well, that grandfather is not spelled out in this regulations, are they?
Only one, so and and we're keeping the law.
Yes, it isn't even a matter of of it being grandfathered, it's that the law still exists. And so so the Duchess would still be able to operate with a special use permit, but the I think. The changes that were made. In the agricultural event venue law that we're talking about that are much better drawn out and laid out and much more protective. Than the existing section that describes conference centers and dude ranches. If if, as Dean said earlier, the 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 next step is to. Uh, if, if, as Dean said earlier, the, the, the next step is to add similar language. To the existing conference center dude ranch section, then I think it answers a lot of those things and, and both can coexist. Um, you know, I, I, I think we answer it that way, because I think it is important. I think these are really important things.
Can we define um grandfathered? What do we mean by grandfathered? Or, or, I mean, like the, the, the dude ranch, they have a special permit as a dude ranch. What about all those other people who are operating without our knowledge? That.
They're operating illegal, they don't get any.
That's what I'm saying, they're not grandfathered. We just wanna make sure that those two things, you know, some people will say, well, we're grandfathered. We've been doing this for a while. So those are two different things. So. Uh, I just don't know if we have to really spell that out in the language.
Know better, Arlene, I'm, I'm looking for.
I know that, but you know.
From following the rules. Just because you've been breaking the law for twenty years doesn't give you an exemption.
True, that's true, and I always argue with that with them, but you know. Very soon in the regulation, so. Anyway, that's it for me.
Anyone else? So, as I, as I mentioned. You can't pass this uh, this law tonight, uh, only for the fact that we haven't gotten the uh, the approval from uh Duchess County Planning. So they have this, this version, but I'll up, update these uh several comments and. And this way, uh, by the next meeting, we'll still have to hold another uh, uh, public hearing, so I guess we should leave the public hearing open.
You don't need another public hearing. Well, not necessarily.
Okay. So if everybody's satisfied with that, then we'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Hey, so Dean.
Yeah.
Dean, I'm new, I'm new to all this, um, and I'm pretty proud of myself that I'm on Zoom here. Um, so I'm gonna take pictures of it and show my kids I can do this. Um. Is this, let me see where I can get over, I'll get over here. So. Do, you're closing the public hearing, so is, is our voice turned off or is this when you want us to address you?
Oh, this is when I want you to address me.
Well, there you go. So I'm not used, this is a different venue for all of us. I'm used to there being a dais, so um. Then let me introduce myself quickly and hit on some of the points and some of the concerns that. I and one of the other adjoining neighbors have. So first, some of you know me. Um, I've been a business owner in Duchess County for forty-two years. I've been a resident of Stasburg for sixty-one plus years. I know I look really good, I look better on camera. Um, and I've been a Creek Road residence, resident for thirty years. So my property is pristine. I border the eastern boundary. Of the old Adrian's farm, um, between Creek Road and Route Nine G. Um, my family has owned the four acres up to recently where another person re- renovated. And I was instrumental in the landscaping of that property. So the four acres where I live, along with my neighbor, pristine, there's not a leaf on the ground. Uh, I'm ready to also undertake now a big rehabilitation of my, my pond property. The across the street neighbor, he will speak soon. Um, I tend to be maybe a little bit more wordy than he. Um, Justin Wizniewski also has a very pristine property. We're out there day and night. Trying to enjoy and trying to create a way of life for our families. Being a business owner, I wanna see the farm succeed. But also, but by being a resident, I wanna see the farm succeed. And not take away from a way of life that we've grown accustomed to. We live on Creek Road in Clinton. Because we enjoy the quiet, the peacefulness, uh, the serenity of it. We have friends that come and sit by my pond and they never wanna leave. So when I have to start raising my voice at my picnic table to talk to my mom down at the other end, and it's not, she's eighty-six. Something needs to be addressed. So when I saw that it had to be any loud ordinance of noise. Had to be kept encapsulated in a building, I kinda did a yee-haw and a little bit of a skip. I do agree that that's not practical. You know, you do have to sit outside. Um, I think some of the main. Talking points we have, or I have at least, um, one would be the, 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 just the hazardous roads, road conditions. That arguably is one of the worst roads that we have in our, in our county. Um, they use it as a bypass road to get over to Route Nine G instead of coming down to the Four Corners. It's the worst corner eh, other than the S turns above Toad Hall. We have young people regulating traffic to and fro. This is during a pandemic season. We're scared to death what's gonna happen, non-pandemic here. And again, this is nothing against any of the owners of the farm. We're all for it, but we've gotta do this and do it safely. The cars in the traffic, just unacceptable, the, the rate of speed and the amount, the volume of traffic on there. And it's not, it's a weekend venue. Now we're doing almost a weekly, everyday venue, so we're subject to this throughout our entire season. I have a beautiful pond, beautiful pool. I can't sit outside and enjoy that. My other would be the signage. Uh, most townships have regulations on signs. Um, there's signs screwing up and down the highway. There's banner signs, which in most towns are illegal. Um, we've got them everywhere. Lighting is another that I see addressed in there. We have spotlights that are, I see that there's a lighting plan that's supposed to be sent in and approved. We've got an extension ladder with a clip-on light as a parking lot ladder next to some really beautiful properties. It just. We, we want some of this stuff addressed. And then, of course, on top of it all, is just the noise. The noise, we need to do something to keep the noise level where it's. It's acceptable for everybody. Where, where Sam and her mom Stacy can make a living, absolutely. But where Justin and I don't have to go inside because we can't stand the noise and the ruckus and the cars any longer. So again, we, we, we've got pristine properties, we've got a nice way of life, we're just trying to maintain that way of life. So help, help, those are my talking points, um, and those are my concerns. I don't drink alcohol, so I don't want people on my road drunk either, but that's besides the point. Um, so those are my talking points. Justin Wizniewski is also on here, maybe Justin wants to pipe in before you close out the public hearing. I do have one final note, though. I did not get, um. Um, I didn't, I wasn't told that this meeting was taking place tonight. What is the typical um, procedure? For informing local landowners?
Well, first of all, we have a, a uh notification system where if you register your email. Um, not that this particular event was, was emailed out to everybody, but the first thing I would encourage you is to register for email notices. Um, our planning um, process, um. You know, typically, whether it be a zoning issue or a planning issue, uh, sends out notices. Um, to whether it be the paper or, um, so all public hearings have to be notified um, to. Those sources of which Carol uh sends out the notices. Um, so there was a notice sent out to it. Um.
I'm just used to the old certified mail technique.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a, a, I, I guess, you know, Arlene can address when she does a change. Uh, you know, someone comes into the planning board, you know, you have to notify so many neighbors and stuff like that, that, that would be a different uh situation. Um, but to address some of your other things, your other concerns and, and comments is that we do have a signage law. Uh, we do have a lighting law and we also have a um, uh, a noise ordinance. So those all still are in effect at this point in time, so. If any one of those things are in violation of the law, those can be enforced. You know, at, and, at any point in time, whether it be an event venue or, uh, or anything else. I mean. We had a, a situation where someone was having a yard sale every weekend and it, uh, yeah, I make the comment. That it's like going south to the border where every, every so, so many poles, eh, there's another sign and, and that's just ridiculous. That's not what we want in our town. Um, so uh, you know, so a- again, you know, we do have a, a sign law that. That does address those things and you can certainly, um, everybody has to comply to those, those uh particular laws. Uh, without this law, um, it's already in existence.
I don't, I don't know if that's been followed up on then along the highway. Um, there's little rascal signs.
Again, like anything else, if, if nobody complains about something specific, um, you know, y- you're relying on. The zoning enforcement officer to actually run by and, and take notice. Um, they may take notice on their own. Um, but it's usually from complaint that those things are usually addressed.
What, how, how do you think um, this particular parcel? Um, because obviously we're addressing old Adrian's farm. Um, as far as parking, I see. You know, the, the parking shall be adequately screened. Well, I don't think that, I think that's ridiculous. They don't have the ability to do that. Um, but they, they, they do park along the accessway, which is already a one-lane road. Um, Arlene made a re- reference to Field Road. Well, you might as well call Creek Road a one-lane road too. There was a time, at, at one time, Adrian says we're gonna lend, lean off property, so that could be a dead-ended street. What a wonderful idea for us homeowners that would have been, because it's, it's the backroads of Georgia on that road. So. There, there, there's no way they can, they can abide by the disguising of vehicles in a parking area. They, they can't abide. By the one hundred foot setback, they just can't do it, it's not practical. But we do somehow have to figure out a better way to regulate the parking in the field. And absolutely restrict it off the road, absolutely restrict it.
First thing I wanna just say is that this law is not dr- addressing any one particular property, so. I'm not here tonight to talk about one particular farm over another. When we make a law, we make a law that applies to everybody equally. And so through the planning process, then we get into specifics about one particular farm and having them comply to. Those aspects of the law, and if they don't up, comply currently, then you have to go for variance.
Okay, okay.
I mean, one, one of my things, I'm just gonna chime in here, um, because I, I've read uh your, your email, Jerry, as well, and, and points are very well taken. Um, you know, when we started doing some of these laws and before I was even on the board. Um, one of my concerns was always protecting our residents as well. Uh, with the, with the law, you know, uh, that, that comes out here, such as yourself. You know, with the, with the noise and, you know, we said, we have a certain way of life. I, I always use these terms. You buy next to an airport, you expect to hear the planes. Hence my house down in Florida, so I hear the planes, I accept that. Or you buy next to a farm, but it's running as a farm, but it's changing the, it's changing the need. Because it's going on every day with that. Um, I think some of that is gonna be where, to answer one of your questions was. Uh, like the, the notice given when they go for their planning review process, once the law is passed. Um, that's when you'll definitely get some sort of notification on that to be able to be part of that discussion, I'm sorry, discussion. Um, but I do agree, it, it should also protect and, and through those processes, it should protect you as the neighbor as well. So I just.
I was at the planning board, I was at the town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board one night. And a lady stood up, or a gentleman stood up actually, and complained about the noise from Mulligan's Irish pub. Didn't you know that that noise existed when you bought a house next to and on Route Three Seventy-Six next to an established business? That's the opposite here. We had a way of life. Now, for our prop, you know, I know this is for townwide. But for the, the case that we're, I'm speaking on, we were there, now you come in. So progress, but what, at, at what a cost? You know, how Mount Gold used to say Indians used to walk through here. So progress, but at what cost?
That's correct.
Justin, are you there?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Can everybody hear me?
Sure.
Okay, and I'm new to this Zoom as well, so. My, my main concern, I guess, is, is the noise. Um, you know, I'm next to Adrian's farm, again, me and Jerry both take very, a lot of pride in our property. But I've addressed the noise with the code enforcement officer and stuff like that, and nothing has been accomplished. I've pretty, pretty much been told, we're not gonna address that, we're not gonna tie it up in the courts. Um, I realize this isn't all, we're not here for one's particular farm. But I, I read through the laws and I'm just curious on how everything is gonna be enforced, because the law is only as good as the enforcement of it. Otherwise, it's just a waste of paper, and that's kind of.
That was really part, part of the, the, the planning process of, of creating the law is that, you know, we can. We can institute all these different rules and regulations, but if nobody's gonna do anything about it, then we're wasting our time.
Abs- and abs- absolutely, that's my concern, is that up until this point, the code enforcement officer has failed to act on anything or even take any type of enforcement action. Whenever there's been viable complaints uh with the existing laws that are on, in effect uh for the town of Clinton.
So, and I've, I've read your emails too, so I, I, your, your email was, um. But as, as far as, uh, you know, specific, whether it be a sign, whether it be a noise. Um, uh, once a, a noise complaint is, is made, you have to catch it so that you can have a meter. And you can test at the edge of the property as to what the noise level is. Um, so that would have been the process, but I guess. All events have stopped in that particular case, but in, in, in all cases, it's, it's a matter of. Uh, if, if someone's having a party every single night, doesn't matter if it's your neighbor, whoever. You know, there is a noise ordinance, so it's, it's really a matter of catching someone in the act. Um, so whether it be. A complaint to the police and then followed up by the zoning enforcement officer or, you know, uh, if it's constantly happening. That the zoning enforcement officer sets up a time when they're gonna go and, and enforce those, that's, that's what their job is.
Here's my thing, the complaint to the police does, i- is absolutely nothing police, and the, most of the police around here do not en- enforce. Any type of local ordinances. Um, so that's why even go that process.
And that was one of the comments with the, with the email, is that it sets up a, a complaint and, and at least it can be followed up with.
It's a waste of resources. It gets, it sets up, all it does is set up a computer entry that they came and. That, you know, the, the police do not have decimeters, we're not trained on decimeters, um. That's why whenever I originally asked it, you know, about the noise and when uh had he come out and checked on it. You know, the, the initial emails early on were, oh yeah, I stopped on my way out to work and my way home from work. Well, seven o'clock in the morning, there's no parties going on. Or events, and five-thirty in the evening, there's no events going on. You know, logically, it would say, I gotta go during the time of an event, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It's not hard. I, I can tell you pretty much when the music's gonna start up every weekend.
Yep. I understand.
Hey Dean, how many, so obviously Justin and I are talking on, on, on the one parcel. How many parcels in our town do you think are gonna be subject to this? You, you have Malaya's vineyards, but they're way off the road. Are, how many other pla- places would this impact?
When you say they're way off the road, they, they still border four houses over on Rimf Road. And the whole thing with sound is.
Didn't know that.
Jeff will tell you, because you can have a party and not hear the noise that loud at the party site. But because of the echoes, it can actually jump over a valley and, and end up somewhere else. And, and, and people have complained that someone had rented the pavilion uh for in Mark Park. And heard noise all the way up Browning Road, so I, it echoes, we're gonna go everywhere.
So Dave Stewart's also on this link. Dave lives down in the old Seidler House, um, down by the old nursery. Um, Dave teased me one day, he said, hey, he texted me, it was the weekend, could you turn the music down? I said, I'm not at home. So. I can hear the diving board at the swimming tennis club. I mean, that's all part of life, you know, but. Obviously, the noise is traveling, obviously, the parking is a problem, obviously, the traffic is a problem. I'm just curious as to how many other places in town this is being written for or taken in consideration for.
Well, I mean, it's the. Well, we have two wineries, so we have Clinton Winery, we have Malia. We have um, Old Adrian's, we have the Duchess and the.
The Field Road.
Those are the only ones that I know of. Well, there's actually one on. Uh, that, that's gotten several complaints on um, uh, Schultz.
If I may, in, in answer to, to your question, Jerry, um, eh, eh, who is this law being written for? Um, Dean named a bunch of um, properties that are either, you know, operating correctly by permit or, or operating without. But this law has actually been written for every property in Clinton. So any property in Clinton that meets the um, the requirements in order to apply to be an agricultural event venue. Could apply to be an agricultural event venue, and then they would be subject to following all of these. Um, uh, um, codes and laws that are in here as part of that permit use. Um, there are still people who are going to do it without the permit. Um, since we're talking about Old Adrian's, for example, Old Adrian's doesn't hold a, a permit to hold, to, to be able to do those events at all. Um, so regardless of what the law says, and I think Dean alluded to this before. So regardless of what the law says, and I think Dean alluded to this before, said this before, it, it really becomes an enforcement issue. And part of that is creating that paper trail. And, you know, I, I get it that for law enforcement, for example, it's a waste of time. It's absolutely a waste of time. And, you know, I look at that as, I, I, I try to be a good neighbor and, you know, operating the farm, we try to be a good neighbor. Um, and we did a lot of experimentation with sound travel. And, um, the Duchess is a 236 acre parcel. Um, our closest neighbor is, I think it's 2,700 feet, um, from, from where we, we, we hold most of our activities. And yet the sound travels through the trees. We, I talked to a, a, an acoustic engineer who explained that trees can actually am- amplify the sound and increase the distance that it travels because they vibrate with the noise. And so our response to that, um, was to change our events. We no longer do events at night. The sound ordinance, and I, I think this is a ridiculous hour, but the sound ordinance is effective at eight o'clock PM. So any noise that, that is heard at the edge of the property of a certain decibel after eight o'clock PM is a violation. Somebody comes to us and wants to do an event, we're very clear about that. We're like, you know, if, if your event is small enough, we'll move you inside a building, but otherwise you're not going to be outside with sound. Um, so in that sense, we sort of do self enforcement. It'd be nice if everybody did that, but that's not a thing. I think one of the things we still have to solve, um, is how do we do this level of enforcement? And in an earlier, um, uh, meeting, it was talked about, um, you know, having the, a full-time zoning administrator and then a part-time code enforcement officer. Uh, and of course the pandemic came. Um, so where was that left? Is that still the plan to, to have that part-time position and fill that, which would be new? And as I understood, was specifically designed to have somebody that could address code enforcement.
Um, well, finding someone has always been the issue, but, um, you bring up the pandemic and, and that also added a, a different problem this year is that, you know, most restaurants and bars and everything else were forced to, you know, seat people outside. Um, so this year forced everybody to have outside events rather than having inside events if they had any events at all. And with the limitation, limitation. So this, this year should not really be the, the measure of, of what's to come. Because eventually when we can have things inside, I mean, that should all be, you know, hopefully calm down as well.
I don't know if I agree with that statement Dean, because, um, during a pandemic, we were, we were restricted as to how many people we could have inside, how many people we could have at a venue. Um, I think come pandemic, once the pause is lifted, I think we're in for a, a lot of trouble on this, at this, at this parcel. My sister-in-law owns a very successful winery and apple picking venue in Marlboro. If I was on her street, I'd be doing the same thing I'm now. But it's only eight weekends. It's before, it, it's, it's during the day. It's eight weekends of the year and it's done. We basically are opening a gin mill next door 24/7. I mean, that's, that's, that's a stretch, but it's every night. There's music, there's alcohol, there's parking. This is every night. I think it's going to be, it, it ha- it could be hazardous next year for us. I, I think we're really, really, we've only seen a bit of it. You were forced to go outside, but if I own that venue, if I own that venue, I'm never bringing my participants inside. I want them to joy, enjoy the vista around them. Sorry, Justin.
No, I'm just going to say the same thing. That's what that, that's, the outside is the draw to an event like that. It's not to be inside. Um, same as Jerry, once I saw that, uh, buildings should be soundproofed for the ag, uh, events law, I, I loved it. I said, great, maybe the noise will finally stop. There's an issue whenever I'm sitting in my house, windows closed, air conditioning on, and I'm still hearing the exact, the words to the song, uh, that, you know, that are playing. The, the amplifiers are so loud. That, that's an issue. I'm not even outside. I'm in the house with the air conditioning on and windows closed in the summer. Um, being outside, I've shot the line to see how far off I am from where the music's playing. It's approximately 1,020 feet. I'm hearing clearly in my yard even what the, you know, the music. It's not just a, a slight, a dull, uh, hum of the music that somebody's playing next door. It's, it's very loud. It's as if I'm next to, I said it before, the fairgrounds. I, I feel like I, I'm in my back next to the fairgrounds during fair week at my house on the weekends, whenever we're here to enjoy. Um, the other issue I just do want to bring up is the roadway. That road's one lane at best down by the farm, uh, in other areas. Uh, the traffic is atrocious. Uh, you know, you can't even walk with, the one, some Saturday, I walked with my daughter down just for a walk down the road, I counted no less than 75 cars passing us on a one lane road. Um, you know, there, you, you got help. The people are actually trying to park everyone within the parking area, but they're placing cones in the middle of the roadway, stopping free traffic, which that's, that's a violation of New York State traffic law. Um, there's just a lot of, there's a lot of violations that have occurred that haven't been addressed. And I'm afraid that this new law is, nobody's going to enforce it a- as well. That's, that's a big concern of mine.
Well, a- again, you know, what we're trying to do is make a law that applies to the whole town. And, and so without a law, there's nothing to enforce. And, and so we have to start somewhere. Um, and you're talking about specific things on a specif- specific farm. Part of the planning process, you know, to get a, a, having to go to the planning board to, to get their, uh, their permit, um, is where all these particular cases should be mentioned.
And I understand, I am speaking in specific, just because that's all I know. That, that, that's the, what I know for Ag Events Law, this is the only, uh, you know, uh, circumstance that I have to address off of. So, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to pick on any one particular venue, um, but that's all I have it to base it off of, um. You know.
No, I understand.
Dean, can I make a suggestion? Dean?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, is it okay? I think we should leave the public hearing open because you, you're still waiting for the comments from Duchess County Planning. So that, that version that you have, it's going to get revised. So I think, you know, with, in fairness to everybody, they need to, to read that, to see that and make a comment. So closing the public hearing, I think.
Well, there's not going to be significant changes and Duchess County Planning had already really approved what we did verbally. They just never sent it to us, you know, in writing. So I don't ex- expect them to make any comment, um, beyond, you know, yes, you, you met all the requirements that we had really o- objected to originally. So I, I, I don't see a need if we've already exhausted.
Dean, I'd like, I'd like to say that we, um, the reason that we reintroduced the law rather than introduce it again, because this was the version that Duchess County Planning reviewed when we sent it to them formally. We made all of the changes that they suggested and the town attorney sent the revised changes to them for a quick look, which they seemed to be satisfied with. So we actually addressed all of their issues. So in the re-introduction, the conversation last week was the pandemic has been, you know, caused us to be shut down for eight months. They really wanted another formal review simply because of the time that has lapsed, just to give it a formal, okay. So the version we sent them is the version that they're familiar with. And I really don't expect them to come back with too many significant changes.
Right.
So could I just ask in, in finishing up, then I'll stop buttoning in. Um, in fairness to the persons that were, that obviously Justin and I are addressing, what guidelines did they have? And, and I commend you guys for your work. You, 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 you can't be complimented enough. You, you put so much time into this. So kudos to all of you and, and, and our wonderful town. Um, what guidelines did any of these parcels venues have to go by pre this legislation that you guys are trying to adopt? Was there any, was any of this on there beforehand when they applied for permits? Did they apply for permits?
Nobody has a permit because it's not a law.
So, okay, that's, that's the question.
The only permit that they could apply for is, would be a conference center.
And at this point, they should be complying with noise ordinances and, and, you know, not blocking the road. That's different. They should be and they're not. And we know that that's an enforcement issue. I mean, I commend Jeff where he says that the, the Duchess has been, uh, self-regulating themselves. They've been complying with all of these things voluntarily and we wish others would do that. But this law at least force, will force venues like the one we're talking about to come in, apply for a permit. They will be told by the planning board what, what, um, requirements they need to meet. And then if they don't, we have more of a, we have more teeth really to go after them for it. Uh, because they've agreed to these things and gotten the permit and we can then revoke a permit if they don't follow those guidelines.
In, in fairness to the farm, I can tell you the last event they had, um, Stacy Higgins, one of the owners, she actually texted me, hey neighbor, we're going to have an event this weekend. If it gets too loud, please let me know. So if they didn't have guidelines to follow, yeah, some of it Michael obvi- is obvious, you know, the parking and some of that, that's just obvious. I agree with you. Um, if they didn't have guidelines to follow, then hopefully this is the, you know, the, the, the metric by which we're going to judge all these establishments henceforth.
And I, and I stopped down there and, and, um, and one of the bands that was playing, um.
Well, if it was veto, you can't talk about veto.
No, it wasn't veto. Um, but, uh, one of, one of the events, um, they went up and told the band that you have to lower the noise. And the, the person, the control board guy, whatever, he actually said he went to the property line and measured the sound. So, um, that's one particular case. So I, I do know that they, they, they asked for people to wear masks. They, they have asked for people to turn the noise down. So, I, you know, just the one time, you know, that, that I saw that particular incident happen, you know, it, listen, you know, at the, at the end of the day, um, if she's having too many events, again, I don't want to talk about any particular person, but if someone's having too many events and it becomes an issue, that's going to be an issue for, for keeping a permit if you get one.
Hey Dean, um, real quick, uh, having to deal with a noise ordinance, is that, is that listed clearly on the website? Is that where we'd find that?
Yeah, you're going to go to, well, from our website, it's going to link you to code 360 and code 360 has all of our, our zoning laws.
Okay.
It's not, Dave, it's on the front page of the web and it's just called the Town Code.
Okay.
At 250 dash 28.
250 dash 28. Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. I just, uh, like I said, I, I live up the road like Jerry had mentioned. And I did kind of ingest, uh, mention to him one time, I was out by my pool. Again, speaking one, uh, about that one location, I was out by my pool, I am, and I just pulled it up on this kind of parcel access. I'm over 3,200 feet away from the venue and I can hear their music over my music by the pool. And I'm blessed to be an electrician, so I can just get bigger speakers, but that's not going to make my neighbors happy, so. Um, so that's okay. And, and that was it, you know, not that I'm making a big deal about it. I just want to know what the rules are so that, you know, I follow and everybody else follows. Thanks for that. And good job, everybody.
So a- again, I don't want to talk about any specific person or parcel, but the law itself. So if there's no further comments to the law, then I would just close the public hearing. Um, and as far as particular person or parcel, once they get their permit, they're going to have to apply and go to the planning board and that's when you can specifically address those items.
I do have one question on the law, just in regards to the traffic, uh, to traffic on any of the roads. Uh, it said, who deems it, uh, I guess who would make the decision that it was unsafe? Because it did say that it would be, uh, at the venue's requirement to, I guess, uh, have law enforcement or whatever come and, and facilitate the traffic. Uh, who, who makes that decision if it becomes the issue?
Uh, you know, it's been a while since I read that specific.
Yeah, let me, I'm going to look through here and try to find. I thought I highlighted that.
I, I thought it was based on a size.
No, I don't think it was based on a size. I know there were size requirements that the town could state how many people were able to, uh, attend specific venues.
It's on page four and it says, uh, it's section four. Um, if the planning board determines that the regulation of traffic on roads shall be necessary, such regulations shall only be done by law enforcement personnel. Um, the cost of such traffic regulations should be fully paid by the agricultural event venue. So that would apply, uh, as, um, uh, as an applicant goes through the process with the planning board to get the special use permit in the first place, the planning board will review that and say, look, every event that you have, you're going to need traffic control. Or any event you have over 50 people, you're going to need traffic control. They would make that determination.
Well, I, I mean. At the time of application then?
Uh, during, during the approval process.
Okay, okay.
And Jeff, when that originally was talked about, it was to stop the vet, uh, the event venue from just sending a kid out to the street.
Exactly, right.
That's really what the intent was, putting that language in there was to specifically say, you can't put someone out to regulate the street. Number one, you're not allowed to. It's against the law, but you know, it's just spelling it out so that people knew that you just can't send, you know, some flagger out in the middle of Route 9G and, and, you know, think that's okay.
Sure. No, I just think it's just an important point being that most of these venues are on the back, or, you know, smaller backroads in the, in the town. It's probably going to be, you know, something that's going to come to fruition at some point with the events.
And, and with, with all of the things in here, a- again, it, it does go to enforcement. But as Dean mentioned, until this law is actually on the books, there, there's nothing to point to, to say that, oh, you should have applied for a permit. You don't even have a permit to operate, let alone meet any of these requirements that are part of that permit. Um, so once this is in place, then it's an easier process for the, the, the code enforcement official to actually step in there. Uh, in terms of.
Last month with the, you know, Airbnbs and, you know, we didn't have anything on the books. So when people were complaining about the handful of, of, of places that were having a problem, you know, we, we supposedly have between 80 and 100, um, Airbnbs, but there was four or five that we were getting the most complaints of. Well, we didn't have a code to, uh, to.
Right. Um, and in, in terms of enforcement, in particular for something like this with, that is relevant to, to farms and agriculture, New York State Egg and Markets Law does allow for and protect to hold events, including weddings. It has very specific limitations on those things and that's, that's section 305A. Um, and those limitations are specific to, um, the, um, the, the, um, percentage of revenue generated by total events as opposed to the total revenue generated by the farm. Now, a lot of farmers or farm operation, uh, operators, uh, will use limited knowledge of Egg and Markets Law to claim protections that they don't actually have. But I mentioned it because it doesn't all have to fall on the town. Um, it also, uh, when you have a farm that is taking advantage of, um, Egg and Markets Law, it can also be sent to New York City markets.
And Jeff, by that language, it, it does specify that only 30% of your revenue can be become, that can come from these events. So that's supposed to limit the, the amount of business that you're doing other than farming.
Right.
So, this, this, obviously, so there was, up to this point, there wasn't anything to necessitate applying for a permit because there wasn't anything on the books that, that constituted the need for a permit. Is that correct? And you guys are doing that now. That's.
A need.
I feel bad that we're like picking on one entity, um, and I didn't know what this. So obviously we're trying to put something on the books that everybody can abide by.
Yeah, well, there was another event that was having more complaints than this one early on. So that, that one ha- happened to really kind of get more attention than, uh, than the Adrian's Farm. But, um, nonetheless, it's, it, it's a thing to come. I mean, you can see all over the county. And, and some places like High Park is very favorable of, of having event venues. So I mean, if you read the High Park law, it's much more generous. And, and since you were all living on the border of High Park, uh, you know, someone could actually have an event then you right across the street of 9G, be in the town of High Park and do a lot worse. That's, I think our law is a lot more restrictive.
Okay.
I commend you guys all. This was wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will sign up for the newsletter.
Okay.
Thank you all for participating.
This has been wonderful.
Jerry, go, go to the website and hit the subscribe.
Okay, okay. Thanks Carol. This has been great. This has been great.
Okay, Dean, you can make the motion.
So I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it. Giuliano, second.
Okay, roll call vote. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Oberly, aye. Cunningham?
Aye.
Giuliano?
Aye.
Dean Michael?
Aye.
Whitton?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now we're going to close the meeting. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Giuliano, second.
Roll call vote. Oberly, aye. Cunningham?
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Whitton.
Aye.
Motion carried. Meeting is over and we will now jump into the regular town board meeting.
Thank you all for participating.
Thank you, Dean. Thank you. Thank you for letting us have a voice. Great job.
Okay. I'd like to call the regular town board meeting on December 8, 2020 to order. It's being held via teleconferencing with Zoom and with YouTube livestream to the public. There's no audience participation allowed in this meeting. Members of the public can do the board meeting and it's livestreamed or on town board videos on the Town of Clinton website. Now, we have to do another attendance to establish a quorum because this is a separate meeting. Supervisor Oberly here, Councilwoman Cunningham.
Here.
Councilman Giuliano.
Here.
Councilman Dean Michael.
Here.
Councilman Whitton.
Here.
Town Clerk Mackin.
Here.
We do have a quorum so we can conduct business. The first items are a whole bunch of minutes that we got to approve and we're gonna have a lot of them. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 29, 2020 special meeting. Is there a second?
Dean Michael, second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call vote, Oberly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Whitton.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next one. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 5, 2020 public hearing on the 2021 budget. Is there a second?
Dean Michael, second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Oberly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Whitton.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next one. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 10, 2020 public hearing on community development block grant. Is there a second?
Giuliano, second.
Okay, roll call vote, Oberly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael. Dean?
Aye.
Okay. Whitton?
Aye.
Motion carried. On to the next one. Told you there were lots. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 10, 2020 public hearing on short-term rental local law. Is there a second?
Dean Michael, second.
Roll call, Oberly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Whitton.
Aye.
Motion carried. I make a motion to approve minutes of the November 10, 2020 town board meeting. Is there a second?
Giuliano, second.
Roll call, Oberly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Whitton.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, next one. This is the last one. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 17, 2020 special town board meeting to adopt the budget. Is there a second?
Dean Michael, second.
Roll call, Oberly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Whitton.
Aye.
Motion carried. Now we go into supervisors' comments. I have a few comments here. The town offices, highway department, justice court office and court will be closed for the Christmas holiday on Friday, December 25th and New Year's Day holiday on Friday, January 1, 2021. The Clinton Community Library will be closed on the same days. The recycling center will be open as usual from 7:30 a.m. to noon on Saturdays, December 26th and January 2nd. Community Power has developed a simpler process to become a member and to receive up to a 10% reduction in your electric bill. The town will get a $50 donation for every person joining Community Power. More details are on the town webpage, The tax collector moved her office in December from the town hall to the schoolhouse. A secure drop box will be installed on the left side of the schoolhouse entrance door to allow residents to drop off only their tax payment. All drop offs for other offices are to use the drop off boxes on the porch of the town hall. For in-person reservation, in-person reserved appointments, the office hours are Tuesdays and Thursdays from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. and Wednesdays from 9 a.m. to noon. Appointments can be made by calling 845-266-5721, extension 141, or email to taxcollector@townofclinton.com. Residents are encouraged to pay by mail, use the aforementioned secure drop box or pay online. To pay online, go to the town's webpage, www.townofclinton.com. Click on departments, then go to tax collector's collector and you'll see the payment portal. The power line information update, we did have a presentation about a week ago. The town continues to work on an agreement with Transco on the repair of damaged town roads when their equipment will need to cross the roads. Currently, they are starting construction at the northern end of the transmission line. Transco gave their presentation on December 3 over Zoom to the community. The video, PowerPoint and minutes of the presentation will be placed on the town's webpage under town board for those who missed the live presentation. For much more information on the project is available on their webpage, Some of the Clinton highlights are, the current towers have an average height of 82 feet, while the new monopoles, because that's what they're doing, they're taking the two towers down and putting one monopole in, have an average height of 90 feet. There are six new monopoles that are 100 feet tall. Transco will be available, will have available an agricultural coordinator to help coordinate farmers with their crops and Transco's construction activities in the transmission right of way. Actual construction in Clinton will begin in 2022. Additional Transco presentations will be scheduled in 2021 as more information becomes available. The Clinton Community Library has a Transco laptop that is loaded with much of the technical details that were presented to the Public Service Commission as part of the approval process for the project. The laptop will be updated as new and more information becomes available. Okay, the next item is Councilman Giuliano.
Alrighty. I would like to make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that Highway Superintendent Todd Martin join the town board meeting to be able to participate in the discussion of the highway bids.
Is there a second?
Dean Michael.
Okay, roll call, Oberly, aye. Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Whitton.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, is he gonna talk now or is it coming in later?
Well, we have the highway bids on the 3rd.
No, I just didn't know when he wanted.
Come on now.
Hello.
Good evening, everybody.
So, okay. Are you gonna say something or are you gonna wait for the bids and stuff?
Um, the one thing I want to bring up tonight is the COVID with restrictions. The highway department is locked down right now. The doors are locked, the signs are up on the front gate and on the back of the building. Appointment is needed, masks are mandatory. The doors to the entrance to the front and the back doors will remain locked 24/7. Everybody, anybody that works for the highway department has to have a key to enter or exit the building. Once the highway employees or anybody else has an appointment comes into the building, they are mandatory to have a mask. Councilwoman Nancy Cunningham has furnished us with the hand sanitizers. They are required, anybody that enters or exits the building for any reason, has to use the hand sanitizer and has to have a mask on as long as you are in the highway department building and the vehicles or anywhere as such. During this time, I've been speaking with the New York State Highway Association of Highway Superintendents along with Dutchess County. We're trying to come up with a game plan and a backup plan in case either one or all of our employees come down with the virus to have a backup plan. Tonight, Councilman Giuliano hopefully makes the resolution and a motion. I have one employee right now to hire as a temporary employee for the winter. It's on call. There's no benefits, no health insurance or any of that to follow along with. And what it is, is it's Tom O'Brien. He previously worked for the highway department, so he's familiar with our operations. He's familiar with our roads and our trucks and stuff like that. He does have a CDL Class B, which is required for any of the highway department trucks that require that. So he does have the Class B license. When he's not driving one of those trucks, he will be driving either one of the smaller dump trucks or one of the pickup trucks for us and it's on call. There's no set hours with him. I can call him 1 o'clock in the morning or 7 o'clock in the morning or 7 o'clock at night or whatever. He's on call. That is the only one that I have right now as a backup plan, as a temporary employee. I've been reaching out to several contractors in the town of Clinton, trying to keep everything local, to try to find contractors that in case one or all of my employees at the highway department comes infected, I have to have a backup plan. I have a job and responsibility to maintain the roads in a safely fashion for any type of storm, whether it's ice, snow, trees down or something like that. So if one or all of my employees at the highway department come infected, I still have to reach out to somebody, anybody, contractors in the town or outside to maintain these roads, plow them, sand them or whatever. I've been working with Supervisor Oberly, our insurance company with Nicole, to start running some of these contractors that we had in mind that are local here to help us in case we do have to shut the shop down for 14 days or whatever it may be with Dutch County Department of Health, with Kathy Tagmire down there to come up with a game plan to have somebody, anybody to help us out. There is three local contractors right now in town that are willing to help us out in case there is an infection or COVID cases in the highway department to come and help us out. I'm trying to work out the logistics of it as far as money wise, insurance, workers comp and all that with Supervisor Oberly and our insurance company to make sure they're legal and legit. So we're not hiring somebody fly by night to cover us in case something does happen. That's basically it with the COVID right now. We are taking every and any precaution necessary to not get infected. Trying to limit the guy's exposure to the outside world, we call it, as far as like going to stores or interacting with the public and stuff like that. If more than, no more than two guys in a truck, they both have to have masks on. We disinfect the trucks before they start working in the morning. At night when they leave, the vehicles are disinfected. We are on a three-week schedule of Councilwoman Nancy Cunningham provided us with the fogging machines. So we are fogging the highway department, offices, the cruise break room, the bathroom. Upstairs, the parts room, the sign room. We are doing the old shop. Dutch County sheriffs have reached out to us because they do have a substation there. So they're asking us when we fog the old shop and the bathroom over there, which the sheriffs use, if we can do the sheriff's office and stuff like that. So this way, if a sheriff comes in, uses our bathroom, one of our guys goes over and uses that bathroom, we're trying to limit every and any exposure possible. I'm adamant about this. I could not afford to have one or all, the whole crew go down during the winter season. It'd be I don't know how to put it, but it would be very bad if we get a snowstorm and we have to go down. I'll be reaching out to you councilmen and women and other people to help us with our trucks and plowing and sanded. There's nothing else, you know, that I've been trying everything and anything possible to limit our exposure at the highway department, put it that way.
Okay. Now we go to the next agenda item. Dean on events law?
Yeah, like I said, we were gonna postpone it until January's meeting, until we got feedback from the.
December, December 30th.
No, 29.
Oh, December 29th meeting.
The others dates are correct further back, but this one you missed.
So December 29th, we can pick it up.
Okay, so that's it. Okay, next one is short-term rental local law fees.
Yeah, this is, I mean, obviously, we've been talking about fees for a little while. I just want to start off, I did make another small change with Carol today. We added the word "and" to a statement by cemeteries, just to make sure the statement above the cemetery fees was correct, but it makes no big change.
Throwing it all out.
Yep, we're throwing everything away. Then I didn't turn to the right page, so I'm looking forward here. But we had discussed basically doing fees for short-term rentals that followed the special permit fees. So it would be, I believe, $250 for a non-hosted special permit, $200 for a renewal, $150 for a hosted certificate and $100 for a renewal. We did receive a couple of emails. I don't know that I necessarily need to read them. I know all the town board members read them. Those emails want us to raise the fees higher, say significantly higher. So my feelings on this, I wrote down a lot of thoughts, but my first is that there's been an assumption that we're gonna have a rash of violations and complaints simply because we passed the law. As Dean pointed out, we have between 80 and 100 short-term rentals in town. You actually overestimated how many have had complaints on them. I checked with our zoning enforcement officer and there were two that we know of. One was on Longview and it was resolved almost immediately. And this is in the past two years. And the other complaint is wrapped up in a series of complaints that are happening on Deer Ridge Drive. So that one has not been resolved yet. But there has not been a large number of complaints, so I just don't see that with this law passing that we're going to get suddenly a rash of complaints on them. We will have violations of people not applying for a permit that we'll have to deal with. I feel like in the past, Ray has rightfully reminded us that our fees need to be based on the actual cost to the town. So I had conversations with both the zoning enforcement officer and the building inspector and they agreed that, I think I actually raised the non-hosted fee from 125 to 150 based on one of those conversations. And they think that those fees are in line with the work that they're going to perform. I think that if we have much higher fees, especially when we're asking for a special permit, if we have much higher fees for the short-term rentals, but we're not doing that for other special permits, then we're writing a law that is treating one group of people unequally, which makes me uncomfortable. And the simple fact that to me, you know, the short-term rental law makes a residential building and allows someone to use it as a residential building. And I think that when we start throwing around the term "commercial activity," I understand that somebody's making money off of their property. But I think it's meant to make short-term rentals sound like something worse than what they are. We have, we allow barber shops and machine shops in the town of Clinton. Without any special permits, they're just an allowed use. And I would argue that things like that are changing the use of a residential building more than a short-term rental would. So I think if we Um, so I think if we want to make these fees really high, it seems punitive to me, and if we're going to have punitive measures, that should be in the punishment sort section of our law, it should be in the fine section and violations, um, not when we ask for uh fees for permits. So that's my argument to keep it where they are and.
I I think for the general public, you might define what non-hosted and hosted are just in case people don't understand that you haven't been involved with the SDR.
Yeah, the short term rental law uh splits uh, short term rentals into two categories, one is hosted where uh the owner of the residence uh is either living in the main home or an accessory dwelling on the property while it's being rented out. And non-hosted is when the owner is is not present while it's being rented out. And that one requires a special permit um and a higher fee.
You know, uh, can we have some discussion on this or we gotta?
Yeah, absolutely. All right. I mean, I haven't even made the motion yet, so.
Well, I didn't know if we were gonna, so you know, I I I agree to a certain degree on that, I mean, like I said, the non-hosted. Um, I I think uh is is fine because the, I'm sorry, the hosted is fine because obviously the owners on the property or someone's on the property that's representing the property. Um, I think it is changing, you know, again, it's kind of going back with the uh in mind with the event law. Uh, that, you know, we're gonna get people that are potentially buying several houses and running them. And even, yes, I understand the term residential, it's funny because I always say uh with my clients, uh, you know, when they say, well, Jesus rental house, when you're doing work, it's commercial work, it's a commercial endeavor, my insurance changes with that. Uh, because it's it's uh, it's it's a little different. So it is a commercial endeavor where there are people changing multiple times in a week on there. And I do agree from my conversations as well that there's been limited problems uh across the board so far with that. Uh, but I've go back to uh when I was uh first getting on the board and and on working on some of these laws, that there should be a benefit to the town and the town residents. Uh, regarding the uh fees, you know, I do understand that the county gets some take in in the uh fees, the taxes for these uh Airbnbs and and so forth.
And they get an occupancy tax, just like a hotel does.
Yes, so they, so they, you know, the 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 uh person who's renting the place is getting the uh, you know, paying the the fee towards that. But I do think it could change.
Quickly, if we wanted to do it, we could pass a law and and do it too, we could charge an occupancy tax, just like the village of Rhinebeck does.
Well, then that's, that might be another way to do it then, so it's a, you know, as far as it's a benefit to the town. I think that's what I'm looking at, because it's, we're we're a bedroom community by nature in here. And this, we have limited uh commercial establishment to to benefit that, you know, have a tax offset for our residents. And most of us accept, you know, we pay more taxes because we have less commercial uh areas. Um, but I think uh I I might agree with the idea that Dean just said uh doing something like that, so it's not specific to the homeowner that's doing this.
Yeah, I have a a couple of things is if we make the fees exorbitantly high, then we're punishing all of the people that comply with it, which is going to be the vast majority of them. Um.
I'm not saying make it high, I'm just saying make it real to the to the point, I'm not saying going to a thousand dollars uh a house.
But when we start talking about the fee should be beneficial to the town, that's when I go back to what Ray has talked about in the past with fees is that we're supposed to be charging fees that cover our costs. That's what the fee schedule's for, not so that we can make money and improve the park, say, or do something.
No, and I understand that, I think what we're having though, we do have a few uh cases going on with neighbors, fighting neighbors, that's costing the town money. And as if we get a few more of these going on, uh, this is stuff that can potentially uh impact the funds within the town to be uh driven to court cases, uh, not to go into specifics. Now, I'm not saying there's anything specific going on with the short term rentals at this point. Um, but that should also be a a certain percentage that should be a factor into, you know, as an insurance for the town uh as part of the fees. Um, if it's a way of doing it through a tax, you know, through a small tax that the town gets a portion of of these ones, maybe that's the way to offset it for make it beneficial to the residents now. I'll say I, as a capitalist, I think, you know, and a person that feels on property owner rights, I, you know, I I think it's a two-way street and I'll be the first one to support property owners' rights to do what they want on there. But uh, as we heard from uh Jerry on the other side of things and some people go a little bit further, we want to make sure that, you know, some of the residents that are not expecting that, you know, that the they see some sort of benefit. And that's what I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it at that.
Ray, you're muted, right?
Muted.
Uh, Michael. I also agree with your logic, I don't think we should be punishing people uh for doing what they're supposed to be doing. I think we need to play this out uh with the fees that you've recommended. And if there is a need to change it, we always have an opportunity to do so. Uh, but I think the punitive thing is not the right way to go and um, based on what Ray had pointed out earlier, these fees should be solely for covering the cost to administer this program, not to make additional revenue. So I agree with your logic.
And I would be happy to revisit, like, this would be a zoning violation, which is, you know, the first offense is zero to three hundred and fifty dollars, second offense, three fifty to seven hundred, third is seven hundred to a thousand, I'd be happy to revisit that. And if we feel that our 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 fines should be higher to discourage people from acting poorly, yeah, then let's talk about that, but I think the fees for the permit, we shouldn't punish them before they do anything wrong.
Right, and we have a lot of punitive reaction, like you said. So, I mean, it's built in, and I think we have to see what happens. We're anticipating things that we really can't back up at this point, so.
You know, um, I I I kind of have a little bit of mixed feeling on it, but um, you know, I'm fine with the fee to just to start off with, it's just that um, you know, one way to look at it is if I think we're looking at what's the worst possible scenario. And and we don't really have a lot of cheap homes in in the town of Clinton. Though the person that's gonna probably Airbnb is someone that's gonna spend a little bit more. So we're not gonna always get the problems that we hear that other towns may have uh with the rowdy kids, which is I guess what the problem was on Deer Ridge. Um, and and maybe it's because I I don't know what that house is, kind of, I haven't driven by it, but uh, you know, maybe it's a a lower scale house. And maybe that's where the problem is, but you know, some of these Airbnbs are like the 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 one on Sunrise, I think this is getting like ten thousand dollars a a day or something ridiculous. Um, so I I don't see that we're gonna have a problem and and looking at just for the fact that if I rent, let's say, my house for six months at a time, I don't have to comply with any of this. You know, if if so, really, all I'm doing is I'm renting maybe six times to s- six different families. A- a- and what's the difference, that the impact is still the same, you still have people coming and going into a house. So I don't really see it personally, a problem, and and I would focus per se on on the violations more so than than the fee itself, because it shouldn't be that the town is there to make money. Um, so I I don't think the town should be a money generator. And I do believe that someone should be able to use their property as long as they're not hurting, they're just, you know, uh, you know, interfering with their their neighbors, um, you know, enjoyment.
Well, eh, oh, go ahead, Ray, I'm sorry, I'm gonna let you.
Yeah, uh, I I agree with the fee schedule, I have no problem with that. I want people to realize that the fee schedule is just one piece of the cost of getting your permit. You've got legal notices, you've got letters to your neighbors, you've got all kinds of stuff associated with the permitting process. And they gotta pay for that, we're not paying for that, that's out of their escrow or their pocket, however you wanna call it. So uh, we're covered with some of those things, okay? Now, the other thing, we're saying, well, we want to increase the fine structure. Uh, unfortunately, New York State law does put limitations on the value of fines for certain types of actions. So you can't make it two million dollars for five times and something like that. So uh, you gotta be careful with saying that you just want to increase fines, you just can't, you gotta follow what is allowed by law and by the categories in a misdemeanor, A, B, C, or whatever, I don't know. It it it's a whole another set of numbers you gotta go through, so.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is that, you know, s- someone does something, we're not gonna find them for like the first incident. We typically uh work with people to to remedy the situation and most people just they don't want to be fined either, they want to remedy the situation. And and so the fine is there when people are not remedying the situation, that's what it's supposed to be. And and, you know, that needs to be stringent enough that people feel the sting that they're not going to kind of push the envelope. I mean, we had the one particular property, not to mention names, that was using it to to grind stumps and 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 didn't care about the fines because they were less than what his revenue was.
Let me ask, say something just as far as the fines, which is kind of offbeat, but it kind of would have something to do with it. Um, some of the, with with the cell towers, right, we, at points we had where, you know, renewal and it's just cheaper to pay the fines for running what they're running in the past is, I mean, does that have any merit as far as that, you make a fine as low? And I'm not about finding someone, I'm really not, what I'm about is, most of them, I wanted to say, there's a difference of running a hosted and a non-hosted. And if someone's charging hypothetically ten thousand dollars a day for, bless them. I think that's, I think that's the capitalistic way, I'm I'm a hundred percent for that, if they can do that and get it. But it changes the dynamic, it's it's a commercial venture where people are coming and going. There's a difference of someone renting out for six months, I rent my house out for six months, out of that, the neighbors are gonna see the same neighbor, same people coming and going. Um, again, I don't think, or or maybe, maybe it's the initial uh special permit fee and then the renewals a little bit lower on that. But I I don't support a hundred percent of going at two fifty for the initial. The renewal, fine, you know, after they go through it, you know, I'll make sure, you know, give them some sort of.
Thanks, Nancy said it previously that, you know, you can always change the fee structure. If after a year, we find out it makes no sense, or it's too big or too little, we change it, we've been doing that for funerals and everything else, you know, the cemetery work. We we sort of didn't know what to do and we've sort of now gotten a set of numbers that reasonably reflect what should be done. And I think the same thing happens here.
Yeah, I agree. All right, so I'm gonna make the motion.
Go for it.
I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves resolution number fifty-two of twenty twenty, a resolution adopting a new fee schedule dated December eighth, twenty twenty. Is there a second?
Dean Michael's second.
Okay, I think we had all the discussion, so let's just jump in to vote. Oberly, aye, Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliana.
No, based on um the uh the non-hosted. Not for.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next one is approval of highway bids, highway bids meaning we're not buying highways, we're buying supplies for the highway department, just so you, the community understands what it means.
Can we put a toll on that highway? We, you know, we could each take turns in it and sit at the booth.
Yeah, there you go.
We'd be an easy cash accountant.
That's right, there we go.
Yeah.
All right, so I guess uh this is to go over the highway business, Ray said uh that we got uh, I'm gonna make the motion and for discussion, Todd, if he wants to bring in on this, this is why he can't kind of came in here. So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves awarding the twenty twenty-one highway bids to those vendors highlighted on attachment AA twenty twenty-one highway bid result.
Is there a second?
Dean Michael's second.
Cunningham's second, well, go ahead.
Now we have discussion.
Just let you guys know, um, as you guys see, um, Carol Jean helped me to town clerk with um giving you guys a spreadsheet and everything, some of the bids I came off of uh Duchess County's uh highway material bid list. Um, so some of those Culver pipes, greater blades and stuff like that, it was cheaper for us um to go off Duchess County instead of uh going with the vendors that did uh that I reached out to for bids and stuff, um, some of the other vendors were higher, that's why I was recommending to you five uh board members to approve the list that I sent with you, um, hopefully you guys got Duchess County's uh bid stuff in there also, so I piggybacked off of Duchess County, which is gonna save us on uh greater blades, Culver pipes and uh things like that, that um, we've been using pretty regularly and it'll save us some money by piggybacking off of Duchess County.
Yeah, the other thing I I'd like to mention, it's not shown explicitly here because we've been doing it is we used to go with state bid on salt. And at one time, it was like ninety-five dollars a ton. The county also got upset with it, so the county went out, we got it down to like seventy-five dollars a ton with the county bid, so we swapped over and have been using the county bid ever since. So that has saved us tremendous amount of money now.
It's under, it's under sixty dollars right now, Ray, I believe it's fifty, it's either fifty-seven or fifty-eight dollars and change a ton uh shipped to us.
Yeah.
Going off Duchess County, what happened was is the uh Duchess County Highway Superintendent's get, did an estimate of our average uh salt usage for the winter season, they took all those numbers and put it out to bid and that's how we came in with uh Eastern Salt. That's the ones you see off the New York State thruway going towards Albany on the right-hand side, those uh brand-new buildings on the right-hand side, that's where our salt's coming out of now, they're the lowest bid for Duchess County for us. Um, that's where our salt is being uh pulled out of right now.
I just wanted to mention, we've been doing this before, but we now are expanding it into other products. Any more discussion? Okay, make the motion, oh, we did do the motion. Okay. So uh, we'll do a roll call vote, Oberly, aye, Cunningham.
Aye.
Mike, Giuliano. Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Motion carried. The next one is a Sam Grant Resolution for the Library Ramp. Uh, with a change of year of um the budget cycle. Uh, we had it in the twenty twenty budget, now we put it in the twenty twenty budget, so we had to change the resolution that was attached to the grant thing. So it's no change in the budget, no extra money at all there as was before. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves resolution number fifty-three of twenty twenty, a resolution showing that the town of Clinton included six thousand in the twenty twenty-one budget to supplement the DASNE grant. Is there a second?
Dean Michael's second.
Okay, ready for a roll call or is there discussion? Okay, roll call, Oberly, aye, Cunningham.
Aye.
Giuliano.
Aye.
Dean Michael.
Aye.
Witten.
Aye.
Uh, motion carried. Uh, conference, discussion of Conference Center Local Law, Dean. Um, talked about it before, but I think a little more time here.
It's, it's basically because we're creating this ag event law, we're going to uh um, rework the Conference Center law to address the uh the changes that we're making, so um, you know, um, I would ask that um, I don't think ever, did, did you send that out to everybody, Carol?
I did, last month.
Yeah, because I I don't remember, but uh, I thought, I thought we did, so, you know, uh, look at it and uh, let's see what changes we need to make and uh any input from uh these last discussions with the uh the ag law to see where we should address something else.
I assume that this is not as pressing as the short term rental and the ag events laws.
Yeah, we don't have anybody applying for a conference center, so I don't, I don't expect that we have to get on right away.
Okay, next one is um meetings, we're gonna have two. Okay, next one is um, meetings. We're gonna have two more meetings coming up. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves setting the date for the annual meeting for December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty at six thirty PM via Zoom. Is there a second?
Dean Michael's second.
Okay, the annual meeting is where we balance the books. Basically, that's what it is. The financial records go through all the accounting codes, we balance them. Okay, uh, roll call. Oberly, aye. Cunningham?
Aye.
Juliano?
Aye.
Dean Michael?
Aye.
Whitten?
Aye.
Motion carried. The next one is the reorganization meeting. It varies as to which day it's held in January.
Uh, Ray, you're muted there.
Let's hit something on his keyboard. Uh, what? Okay, uh, I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves setting the date for the reorganization meeting for January fifth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty PM via Zoom. And this is where we uh do all the appointments, change of salaries, appoint all the banks and newspapers, all kinds of ministry via. Is there a second?
Dean Michael's second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Oberly, aye. Cunningham?
Aye.
Juliano?
Aye.
Dean Michael?
Aye.
Whitten?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next one is uh, this is we didn't know until recently, recently being like within the last week that the Association of Towns annual meeting that's traditionally held in New York City is gonna be held via Zoom. And uh, I'm also the representative that goes to vote and things like that, but I also used to go and you learn stuff. So I, I sent that all out to the board people for them to consider if they want to participate or not. I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves Supervisor Oberly's Virgil, Vir- virtual attendance at the Association of Towns twenty twenty-one virtual conference from February fourteenth, seventeenth, twenty twenty-one at the cost of one hundred dollars. Is there a second?
Dean Michael's second.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, I mean, it's so cheap. I would basically kind of recommend that we all do it.
Well, whoever wants to, just let me know. I sent it on the email and we'll coordinate it and we use it credit card.
I mean, are they gonna be doing um, the breakout sessions with all the different uh venues like they did?
Yeah, well, you actually have one more.
Went to one, so.
You have one more month after the close date, so it would be March, April seventh, no, March seventeenth to take the classes if you don't take them on those two days.
So you can, you can view the videos.
Yeah, yeah, they're online.
Yeah, I would want to do it.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I sent you all the information yesterday or today. I lost track because I just got it. Okay, roll call vote. Oberly, aye. Cunningham?
Aye.
Juliano?
Aye.
Dean Michael?
Aye.
Whitten?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, Whitten, you got a statement here?
Yeah, sorry, hold on. Um, I received an email from Brendan Carney, our county legislator, and she wanted me to read a statement for her. Um, Slate Quarry Road has long been a dangerous passage through Clinton and Rhinebeck. I have worked hard with local residents, town officials in the county to find solutions to its hazards. I'm pleased to share this update. A safety assessment of County Route nineteen, Slate Quarry Road, was concluded in two thousand nineteen. The Duchess County Department of Public Works reviewed this assessment and explored options to help mitigate concerns. Although the COVID pandemic has caused delays, the department has pursued possible remedies and remains diligent in their efforts. An engineering survey of the roadway topography was commissioned and is near completion. Duchess County Department of Public Works recently announced resurfacing of two and a half miles of Slate Quarry Road. This project resurfaced the roadway with new high-friction asphalt from Zipfelberg Road to Center Road. The existing pavement has lost some of its friction characteristics, which creates safety issues. The new high-friction asphalt addresses those issues. New high-reflectivity signage will also be installed to improve driver awareness and safety. Duchess County DPW continues its efforts to improve safety. Regarding motorists traveling at excessive speeds, at my request, the Duchess County Sheriff's Office has increased patrols. I will continue to push for safer driving conditions for both Clinton and Rhinebeck. Um, I also had one other thing I wanted to add that was not here. Um, recently, I uh, I know several people that have come down with COVID recently. Um, and all of them got it by attending a party uh against all recommendations. So I want to commend Todd Martin for the measures that they're taking in the highway department. And I just want to say that I consider everybody who lives in Clinton my neighbor and I care about all my neighbors. Um, so please, wear your masks. I know the holidays are coming up and everybody wants to go to these parties. But I think we gotta skip it this year and please keep us all safe. It affects every one of us. Um, so follow the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we go into resignation appointments. There are no resignations. Appointments. Chris?
All right, so um, need to make a, we have a uh, as Todd, Todd talked about, bringing in a uh part-time uh person uh as a backup or, as we say, on-call person uh if there's an issue to come in here. Um, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve, uh, so make a motion to approve the temporary appointment of Tom O'Brien on a call uh on-call basis from December eighth, two thousand twenty to March eighth, two thousand twenty-one uh at the uh rate of pay for seventeen fifty, if he's driving a non-CDL truck and twenty dollars an hour for driving a CDL truck. Um, in discussion, he is being appointed as a backup driver in case of illness.
Is there a second?
I'm in half second.
Okay, any more discussion?
Uh, just to point one other thing before uh Todd was telling me today that he has been a employee in the past for several years uh with the highway department, so he has experience with the town roads and town equipment.
Okay, roll call. Oberly, aye. Cunningham?
Aye.
Juliano?
Aye.
Dean Michael?
Aye.
Whitten?
Aye.
Motion carried. He's hired. Okay, warrants, Dean?
I make a motion to approve the following resolution, be it resolved the town board approves the December eighth on the general fund warrant vouchers number five forty through five eighty-six totaling one hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighteen cents and the December eighth, twenty twenty highway fund warrant vouchers number two hundred and fifty-five through two hundred and seventy-seven totaling twenty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-four second.
Is there a second?
Juliano's second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call. Oberly, aye. Cunningham?
Aye.
Juliano?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Whitten?
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to move funds. This is in an effort to keep the accounts balanced, so we don't overspend any account. I make a motion that the town board approves the following resolution, be it resolved that the town board approves resolution number fifty-four of twenty twenty. A motion to move funds at the December eighth, twenty twenty town board meeting. Is there a second?
Dean Michael's second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call. Oberly, aye. Cunningham?
Aye.
Juliano?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Whitten?
Aye.
Motion carried. Supervisors report. This is the financial record for the expenditures from year to date and last month. I make a motion that the town board approves in November twenty twenty supervisors report. Is there a second?
Dean Michael's second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Ober, Oberly, aye. Uh, Cunningham?
Aye.
Juliano?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Whitten?
Aye.
Motion carried. Any other business before the board? I make a motion that the town board adjourns the meeting. Is there a second?
Hey, I just got one, uh, two things quick here. Um, there was uh, the high friction that uh Councilman Whitten was talking about. Um, there was, first thing this morning, before seven o'clock, we had a rollover auto accident on Slate Quarry coming down the hill. And once again, the town of Clinton Highway Department was out between six and seven o'clock this morning. Um, and we sanded and salted that hill for them. Um, the state police doing five miles an hour um, coming down that hill, just about slid into the back of North Duchess Paramedics ambulance. Um, so on request of the New York State Police, we did salt the new section that the county just resurfaced with this high-friction stuff. Um, so I, I'm not a hundred percent sure that this high friction's gonna work um, as of yet. I know it's fresh and new, but I'm not a hundred percent convinced that this is gonna work. Um, I'm gonna write letters to the county on this when they redid those uh sections on our town roads where we intersect with them. For example, uh, Mountain View Road, there's a, a big dip now coming into that intersection. Lake Drive coming in there with the campers and stuff. We just had a camper come in uh a couple of days ago and they ripped the bottom jack off the back of their camper, so I mean, the county's trying to do everything and anything to, to prevent this, but in the same token, it's also affecting our town roads in that section um, as far as plowing and sanding out to those intersections. Like I said, Lake Drive, uh, Bartle Circle, I've already been in contact with uh Bob Ballkine, the commissioner, and Gary Cooper, the uh superintendent for Duchess County Highways. Um, I'm trying to wait for a call back or a meeting with them on site to uh explain to these people, you know, our issues coming out to the town roads. It's nice that they're trying to do this high friction. I'm all for safety and everything on that road. I know it's treacherous and dangerous, but I'm looking out for our intersections coming out because they're just worried about the county road and not our town roads. I'm worried about our cap, town roads coming out to the county roads. So that's gonna be an issue there that we're trying to uh rectify with the county. Um, just let everybody know.
I thought they were supposed to fix lake.
I thought so. We wrote letters to them and I haven't heard back and I've got two phone calls into Bob Ballkine, uh, the commissioner and Gary Cooper, the superintendent of highway for the county, and I've not heard back from them yet. I'm gonna wait and see a little while longer here and then uh, we're gonna take action or something because those dips coming off with our plow trucks coming out there, we're gonna be ripping that up uh very very proficiently coming out to those intersections to push off and to, to back up and come back into our roads. It's, it's gonna either tear our trucks up or tear their roads up. And I'm not looking forward to tearing our trucks up. I will not tear our trucks up over that. We'll push the snow out to the county intersection and try to do our best to get it off the road, but I'm not gonna be tearing our trucks up because of the county's mistake or diligence of uh our considerations for our town roads off of those uh county roads. I mean, it's just not economical or feasible for us to replace some trucks just because of the county's mistakes or not looking at for our best interest coming off of their, their road.
Um, the minute this meeting wraps up, I'm gonna be jumping into another Zoom meeting with Brennan. Um, can I give her your contact information so she can talk to you about this? She's had some success with the Department of Public Works getting them to do things.
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely. And also, I just one last thing, um, the two new highway trucks are in. Um, they're operational now. Uh, we're just waiting for the plates back from DMV, but we have insurance on to them. Training's been uh done with them and stuff, and I'm looking forward to uh putting those out on the road for the taxpayers to see. And I'd like to thank all five board members and Carol Jean Mackin and uh Melissa for all the help and uh support for these uh trucks and for the highway department. I greatly appreciate all of you guys. Thank you.
Uh, I got a comment about this uh friction surface on the road. That's been there to take care of water, not ice. And I think this morning we had a coating of ice and what that does is it just fills it in and becomes a skating rink. So you gotta remember that it's not a cure-all for all conditions. It's only predicated on using it for rain or water, fog or whatever, that kind of condition, not snow and ice. So I just make that as a comment.
All right.
Okay, so let me go back and say, I make a motion that the town board adjourns the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call. Oberly, aye. Cunningham?
Aye.
Juliano?
Aye.
Dean Michael?
Aye.
Whitten?
Aye.
Motion carried. End of the meeting. See you down on the twenty ninth.
Well, everybody have a good holiday.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Be safe.
You too. Thank you.